Okay, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
It's been moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Alright, the motion carries. Is there any public comment?
Hello, if you are a participant or an attendee here and you would like to address the board, please use the raise hand feature if you are on Zoom. And we have no public comment.
Thank you. Alright, we'll move to the director's report.
Okay, I'm gonna start with a handout I'm gonna pass around and Amy is going to, oh, I didn't mean to do that. I was just turning. It's gonna share it with those who are online so they can see it, but she's not back in the room yet, so she'll be here in a second. But you will be able to see this also as I walk through it with you. The first thing I wanted to talk about is obviously the relief dollars that have come into the state. That is substantial, and I've given an update each month, and I think each time we meet, there's more. So I wanted to make sure you kind of saw a big picture of everything and how some of that's being used and planned to be used. So this is a short document that has two tables that you're gonna see. The first one is a summary of all of the allocations to date. So if you look on the far left where it says fund, it's broken down by the different acronyms for each of the pots that have come out. SO1 was the initial funding we received in last March of the CAREERS Act, and that was the 71 million that went to the state. The breakdowns, as you go across the table, are the amounts that were available to the LEAs and how much is available to the department, and a timeline of when those funds can be used. So each of these, these packages have different requirements in terms of what has to be held back and what has to be used in different ways, and it has progressed with each sort of funding stream, and that's why we have these different categories. So if you look at that first one, the 64 million was the amount that went out initially to schools directly. The department had that holdback, but then through our holdback, we purchased those Canvas subscriptions or the reimbursement for other schools. So it all went back out again, but after we leveraged our capacity to use those funds to extend it to schools, what's different is that the money that goes directly to the schools follows the Title I formula. Anything that we send out from our allocation can be sent out more equitably in a different formula. So that's, that's, that's something to pay attention to because I think you've probably heard where in that round two, you know, Des Moines received 41 million and Waukegan received 800,000, and that's through the Title I formula. But when we sent out funds for gear or for Canvas, it was equitable for every district. It didn't, it wasn't tied in that same way. So that's kind of an important distinction, just to note. SR2 was the 300, close to 345 million dollars. Again, it's broken down the amount to schools, amount for us. You know, SR1 has basically been all allocated and expended. We already have reimbursement requests for SR2. Those are submitted to the department quarterly. The first round was forward funded and the receipts were sent in after. The next rounds will all be reimbursement based, so they will have to send the receipts first, and then they will get that money reimbursed within 30 days. A key point to remember is that none of this money is just sitting in the bank account of the department. We have access to the money, but we don't, we're not holding the money. Part of that is tied to the cash management provisions that you can't hold it in an interest-bearing account. So when we allocate it, it literally is a, we draw it down and then we send it out, or we don't draw it down for ourselves until we can expend it. So just to make it clear, there isn't a bunch of money sitting here at the department, but when we get the award, it means we now have access to it.
So the federal government keeps that and then you have to draw down?
Yes.
Yep. And so you said they have to spend the money first and then they can, they get reimbursed first?
Yes.
So do they have the money? I mean, do they, does that come out of there? But, I mean?
Yeah, in, in most schools, you know, you have like this annual budget where, you know, they pay for something. They're not actually writing the check yet necessarily. They've, it's been encumbered or they've made the agreement, but then the funds are drawn down reimbursement. Some expenses might have to be paid upfront, and then it's backfilled this way. So it kind of depends what it is. There are also provisions where if a single item costs more than $5,000, they have to get permission first before paying for it, and there's a system in place in CASA that allows that to happen. Again, this is all tied to because it's a grant, and there's federal grant provisions that dictate how these funds can be used in addition to how it's intended to be used for relief. So all that sort of has to work together, which is why it isn't just a matter of, here's a million dollars, we give it to them. There's a lot of different provisions. But at the same time, there is a lot of flexibility in how it can be used when you're basically looking at anything to, to prevent, respond to, or mitigate the impact of COVID. I don't remember if those are exact words, but that's the intention here. And knowing that, you know, the, the state we were at in March versus where we are now, it's a little bit different. And as this final allocation, this recent one, was really specifically for reopening schools, and our schools are open, what does that look like in terms of uses? So that's why we're putting out, as I mentioned earlier, some of that guidance for ways to spend the money, because you'll know as well, it's a short timeline. You know, 2023, you've got three years from beginning to end to spend all this money, and it can only be spent in certain ways. And we have to be really clear that it's one-time money. So as schools look at their budgets, they have to make sure they don't put themselves in a position where they, they've used the money in a way that in three years would put them financially in a bad position. So while we can't tell them what to spend it on, we can give them guidelines on how to best spend it to get the maximum impact for their specific needs through some of the guidance we can put out there.
Seems to me this would be a nightmare to audit. Is that right or not? Pretty, pretty black and white here, or is it just?
Um, you know, what's in, in, so at the beginning, I was, you know, we're, we're just gonna do all this with our staff, and, you know, the federal department has created a whole new division to do this. And so we're reaching a point where we're gonna have to restructure a little bit because this is a full-time job for several people just for this. Now, what's helpful is there is money specifically dedicated in here for that use. We are not keeping any of the money. Everything we are doing is for, to get as much as we can out to schools. But there's some of it we have to keep and have to use, and we're gonna need it because, you know, I can't keep adding this to people we already have, and it is gonna be a lot of work.
Well, and peanuts to you compared to school districts. I mean, huge amount of money that go into each one of those school districts, right? And, and again, auditing that plus what you already do, I mean, it's, has to be, has to be crazy job.
Yeah, and we've had similar conversations about this too with the SBRC and what that looks like. You know, so it's nice that we have lots of, you know, angles to kind of look at this, but it is. It is a whole new kind of piece of the puzzle in terms of work that schools have to do.
Can you be compensated for that? I mean, is a part of that, I get extra money to oversee how that money's being spent? Do I have personnel, extra personnel to do that?
For the state or district?
For the, for the.
You can't, you don't really get extra money, but we can use those dollars to compensate individuals or to bring people on part-time to do it. So with grant money, you know, you can use that to cover costs of salaries for individuals who are spending time on that work, and that's what we're gonna have to do. We haven't been doing that, but I can't keep doing that to them. So we're gonna have to, that's gonna have to look a little different. And that's why, you know, when you're talking about the first time we do this, okay, now as it gets bigger and bigger and more, you know, as you.
Looking at 2023, it's the fund availability, so it looks like this could go on for quite a while?
That's when it has to be spent by.
Okay, so they can spend it, so they, I mean, it could be going on for, they could be asking for funds for another two years?
So they'll be sending us receipts. Yet for three years, we're gonna be managing this money. Is that what you're asking? Yes. It's three, it's three years of work to do this, yes.
That's a long time.
The other thing you'll note too is the ENS is the money, you know, initially when they gave allocations for non-public schools, it was sort of tied in with the public allotment. They've since separated that, you know, and then the department is also taking on the management of those funds as well. So outside of the, the public schools, we're also managing the resource for the non-public schools. So that's those two. We'll say ENS and ENS2. That's why those are different because initially it was part of SR1, and then you've got GEAR and GEAR2. GEAR was used for, remember, we gave the hotspots or connectivity, and there was some money for higher education, community colleges to work on some PD, and, and, you know, Jeremy in his division helped allocate some grants there. And then GEAR2, we haven't announced the uses yet, but we will be, because those are dedicated under the guidance of governors, so I'm finalizing that with her and we'll announce that as well. Yep.
Funds going to non-public schools, is that only state-accredited, non-public?
It would be state-accredited, either independently accredited or accredited by the state board, but unaccredited schools would not be able to participate.
And then that last one you'll see is that grant that we applied for, that was the 17 million. So I did, you know, a quick little bit of math, which is not really good on your phone because it doesn't, when you have this many numbers, it runs out of space. But, you know, you're talking about over 1.3 billion dollars just for Iowa, just for schools. And if, you know, there's other states and different allotments with that as well, but I mean, that's, that is a substantial amount of money. How often do you say B, you know, you have to sort of pause on that? So, but all that being said, you know, as we talked about this morning with the therapeutic classrooms and the needs of kids and the needs to connect with communities, there are some things that we can do. And so there's things that we can do at the department to help leverage support, and there's things that schools can do as well. So we need to be smart about this, and that's our role in terms of guidance and support, but it really is just a tremendous amount of funds.
What bothers me about grants like this is the, is the demand that we have to spend the money. I mean, we gotta spend the money. We don't spend the money by 2023, holy cow, we lose all this money. So we're gonna find something to spend it on, and that's what frustrates me about things like this, but.
Well, it's relief.
Everybody does.
Sure. It is relief funds designated in response to an emergency. It's not educational funding. It's response to a specific need. So that's part of the issue.
Government urgency to get rid of the money. We gotta spend the money, and that bothers me.
Yeah.
It does provide a wonderful opportunity for people to, you think the way they're educating students. Superintendent, we always said, you know, things look a lot different around here if we had additional money. Well, guess what? Now you have additional money. What's gonna be looking different around here?
Yeah.
So it's a wonderful opportunity. I understand what you're saying. I disagree with what you're saying. And as my other comment is that, it sounds like if it's not spent, it's gonna be, I guess, returned or not drawn down, so to speak. But, you know, with all the kids in need as far as therapeutic and/or otherwise and meeting needs of kids, it's like, okay, here's a golden opportunity. Here's a silver lining. Let's see what.
Absolutely.
They probably don't even know. I mean, you know, I think that right now we probably don't even know the, the more longer-term effects, impacts that COVID has had on our kids, you know, in terms of social emotional. I think in the next year, that's probably gonna, and mental health issues, I think a lot of that's gonna come to light in the next year. So hopefully they'll start kind of preemptively planning for that and have those supports maybe in place when it's actually, you know, because it's probably gonna be really heavily needed. I had a question about allocation. So how, how is it, did the federal government or did the, did you guys?
Federal government.
How, how it went to like different, like, school districts?
Yep, and it's based on that Title I formula. Which we've got a lot of questions from districts on and concerns and frustrations because of the disparity I just said between, you know, what Waukegan receives versus Des Moines, but no, that was set by, by the US Department of Education, and we, we can't do anything.
Okay, you guys just, okay, I got you, okay.
And then quickly on, if you turn, if you flip it over, and I, I didn't print this right so I could get it all on one page, but these categories, when it talks about district uses of SR1 funds, and just this is the first allocation, these are categories that the US Department of Education required us to survey districts on how these dollars were spent. But it's interesting in how it's sort of broken down. One thing I wanted to make a point of noting though is when you look at where it talks about mobile hotspots, internet devices, et cetera, those percentages look pretty low, but remember, we gave them other money to use for that. So GEAR funds were used for that, and this was the money that was used first kind of back in March. So we wouldn't probably have expected as much to be right there. But as you have different, you know, sort of pots of money to use for that, you're gonna see how these dollars might be, might look a little bit differently. But I thought that would be something interesting for you to be able to look at as well. So any questions on?
Department, gonna be collecting data as far as learning loss, Amy, as far as where students were at and before and after COVID, and tracking in the future as far as some type of catch-up, because that's part of the SR funds too, as far as how can we catch these students back up?
Yes. Do you want to talk about that? Because we have a whole plan, sort of, but.
That, happy to. So yes, and when you were talking about the opportunity with all this money and the need to spend it down, we've been talking to, there are a few schools out there who are feeling the urgency to make sure this money is spent wisely, right? I'm sure actually they all are, but some of them are calling us. And so one of the superintendents we've talked with most is Jane Lindeman in Waterloo, who I, I like her saying sometimes, she said, you know, so we have 13 million dollars here and we should all be fired if we get to 2023 and something hasn't changed in our district. And I was like, well, that's true. Like, we should, we spent all of our jobs. We can't do something with a billion dollars. So we, we do have a plan that emphasizes some key points, and one of them is accelerating learning, and what does that look like across the state? We don't wanna say learning loss because it's actually learning they didn't have an opportunity to get, yes. And so the good news is that we had done so much work in the state over the last, I would say, eight to 10 years, setting up ways for districts to, to use an early warning system. And a lot of it focused on literacy, but we actually have literacy, math, early warning system that we had already piloted in high school, so, and actually grade seven through 12. So we are well-positioned to help districts measure, okay, so where were we? Where are we now? And how will we know when we are actually making a difference here to recover? The other things that we know we need to focus on are absolutely social, emotional, health, and leadership is a big one too, because we know that there are, there are leaders out there who don't feel that they have the skills and capacity, and capacity, just like we are thinking, well, where's our capacity to do this with all this money? Isn't influx in schools too. So there's a leadership component where we want to be able to build networks for schools to absorb the money and the information and actually be successful here. So we do have a plan. We actually have to submit a plan with the SR3 money. So it's actually kind of fallen together pretty nicely for us, and it would be great to present that to the board at some point.
Yeah, and it even is an extension of what we set up last summer when we had those Google sites and the priorities. So it fits well with what we knew we were gonna have to do anyway.
Yeah, so this has impacted our, our reporting to the feds in terms of our progress, showing our progress. We're not doing Iowa assessments this year?
So we are.
We're still gonna go ahead.
And that is required by law. That was in Senate File 2310.
You can't ask for a waiver for that. You just, you have to do it anyway, right?
Correct.
So graduation rates and all these various things that we have to report to the feds, do we get waivers on that or what happens there?
Yeah, and, and, and some of that is kind of, we're in the process of, there are some waivers we can apply for at the federal level. It doesn't prevent us from having to give it in the state, but it might impact what it looks like there. We haven't finalized that, but we'll give you an update on it when we do. But the idea is that we want the information to tell us as much as we can without punishing anyone.
No, and I think with the Iowa assessments, I think, yeah, let's look at them, and it's nobody's fault in particular. It's just what it is, and what, what is it we're gonna have to do now to mitigate that? So, yeah.
Just a follow-up with all this coming in. I'm anticipating, could be wrong, that it's gonna create a more acute shortage of teachers or spending the money, maybe adding additional staff.
They can use it for that. That gets a little tricky because you want to make sure it's intended for something that you can cover for the period that it's allowed, and, but it can be absolutely used for recovery. So when you talked about shortages for services and those with the skills to do it, there's certainly some, might be some challenges there as well. And we've talked, you know, sort of separately, I've talked to Larry Weiss about, you know, prior to any of this, what it's sort of the teacher shortage start to look like, and how do we come back and revisit some of the flexibilities we can put in place to address that? Some of that has been done throughout this year to provide different access for people to work in the classroom. The question will be, what will that continue to look like going forward? But I think there absolutely will be a need for it because we're gonna need, likely need more people.
We are currently, we have some guidance drafted on, what, how would we ask districts to prioritize spending these funds, but they have to translate it into their local context, right? Our last choice for spending these funds would be add on a lot of staff because of the funding cliff, right? I mean, you were around for the ARA funds, and some people did get themselves hung up on a funding cliff with ARA.
You have to, you have to anticipate that.
Plan, right? And so.
Your plans that positions are here today, they may not be here.
And not everybody's great at planning, so we'll just, when we have, get the guidance out, we'll have, you know, cautions on how to plan for adding the staff you need now, but not guaranteeing those positions and doing it a way that, you know, is fully informs your board, fully informs the people you're hiring, you know?
Okay.
Listen, it's a great opportunity.
Yes. So I will continue to report back to you on that. Okay, a couple of other things just such upon as well. One, I was able to have my first work-based learning, you know, director's tour visit last week, and Betty was able to join me at Marshalltown, and I cannot say enough about how wonderful that was and just getting back into the schools and visiting with kids. John, I know you're planning to join me for Cedar Falls on that visit, and any of you that, if there's a visit scheduled near you, I think Carol sent you the list, just let her know, and you're happy to join me as well. But that's been great, and I look forward to that continuing as well. Being able to hear from the kids and the teachers, just the enthusiasm, you know, as you think about this past year, what I saw in that classroom was just amazing, and that was very refreshing to see that, with all things considered.
Yeah, well, I was just gonna say, like, so when you do these tours, how, what do you do on them, like, to hear from the students and teachers?
It depends what the school wants, wants me to do. So I really let them set that up. It's their opportunity to showcase what work-based learning. This one is really specific to work-based learning because it's kind of tied to one of sort of my priorities and what I want to see. And then they, whatever they have, they let me know. So this one, I gotta go in a classroom. There was this teddy bear that you could feel the vein and do a blood transfusion. These kids were showing me stuff, and so that was, I thought that was pretty cool.
I'd be interested to join you in one of those, just because I need to look at them, because I've been doing roundtables with students, and work-based learning is something that's been coming up constantly, and there's a lot of opinions on it that I think are really interesting.
Check with Carol. She's got the dates with all the, well, I think she sent it to you, but if you want to join, just give her a note. A quick conversation on plans for future board meetings, you know, as we get to where, you know, eventually the proclamation will expire in terms of our ability to meet remotely and we'll have to be in person. So as we plan to continue to come back, and this has been great today, and we're back in the state boardroom, you'll need to consider your options because we'll need to have that quorum in person. The flexibility of the remote will eventually expire, so just be mindful of that as we move forward. I think we would expect next meeting to look a little bit different in terms of public access as well. And we have some rooms that we're gonna set up where, like, today we had the ICN room set up for overflow. We're working on having that monitored out there, work for showing the meeting. And then we will continue to have the Zoom option because I think that allows us to connect with former people, and they can, or, you know, they can choose to come in or not, but I think that's a great way for us to be more transparent and have more public accessibility to what we do. So that's sort of our plan, just so you're aware of that going forward.
We've sort of got away from traveling this past year, but we've been to a number of school districts in eastern Iowa and central Iowa. Still haven't got to northwest Iowa yet, so we need to do that sometime. And I understand the limitations that we've had.
Sure.
Past year, so totally understand that.
The last thing then is just an update. You know, if you walked around the building today, you might see a little bit of a mess, but we've been doing quite a bit of work just to update our spaces. We've moved some staff around. We've done some reconfiguring with cubicles, and then we've done some additional things in terms of, you know, we're gonna have some water bottle fillers out here, and we're looking at the HVAC and the air systems, and we have some, you know, mitigation strategies in place as well. But we've done some work to the building. The other one, I still don't know exactly what it was, but it was something that had, we had a generator in the parking lot for a couple of weeks, and it'd be 100 degrees and then 40 degrees and everything. We'd fix something, then it would break, but all that is to fix it and make it better. But that's been really good to help us as we have staff, more and more staff coming back in the building regularly. It was great to get some of that work done, and I think it'll make our work better going forward. But just so you're aware of that, and if you walk around, that's why it might look a little bit different because we've had workers here for a few weeks taking care of that.
Is there a timeframe for opening the building?
Well, by April 1st, we'll have all staff back here in some way, not all staff at the same time, but a regular schedule. We did, though, we have a security system in place on the front door, so it would, it's gonna be open, but it's not gonna be, anybody can walk in and out. We're also looking at adding security cameras and public safety is looking at adding some outside. So open in terms of accessible to the public, which it is now, but not many people come here unless there is a need for an appointment. But it is, it will, we will not just have free flow of people in and out without us letting them in for a variety of reasons. And I think from a security standpoint, that's certainly outside of COVID or not is an issue we needed to address. And you'll see, those are set up, so when you had to buzz in, we have stations already in place for that. But it'll be helpful to get some more resources in place for that also. And then that's all I have, unless there's other questions.
Any other questions?
Oh, I do have a question. So I saw that, I don't know if this is something that we can talk about at this board meeting, but the equity, the social justice, that canceled, and then equity meeting has also been postponed.
They're both just been postponed. Nothing has been canceled. It's just postponed temporarily and while we watch for legislation that works through. So we'll provide some additional updates on that, but yeah, just so you're aware, the conference was scheduled in a couple of weeks, and for some timing of some different, some bills that are working through the process, we made the decision to postpone it until we kind of had a better understanding of what that would look like going forward.
And then those webinars that were posted, are those still accessible or were those taken down?
Those will be taken down for a little bit until we have the opportunity to review them, and then they'll certainly be, they'll be reposted as we make sure we are presenting information away that is within the bounds of whatever possible legislation might have. It's a tiny thing right now, so we want to make sure we're just managing it the right way.
Any more questions?
All right.
Okay, thanks. Move to legislative update.
Yes, thank you very much. So, yes, Renee German, legislative liaison for the department, and thank you for having me to speak and give a brief update. So the department bills are working through the process. We do have House File 308, which is on senior year plus proficiency requirements. That one has been signed by the governor, so that one has been finalized and is in its final form. And again, that's House File 308 on senior year plus. Other department bills that are sponsored by the department are technical corrections, and they're working their way through the legislative process at the moment. I wanted to also briefly bring up Senate File 159, which is the Governor's Education Bill. That bill passed the Senate with different divisions in it. For instance, Division 1 Student First Scholarship Program, Division 2 Charter School Programs, Division 3 of the bill was Voluntary Diversity Plans. Division 4 was on Education Information Program Standards and Funding. Division 5 Education Tax Credits and Deductions. Division 6 was on School District Enrollment Working Group, and the last division was Open Enrollment. So that bill, Senate File 159, has passed the Senate. It has gone over to the House, but has not had any movement in the House for Senate File 159 all intact. What the House has done, the House has split the Governor's Bill into three bills. So now we have House File 847, which is on education practices that has the majority of the bill from the Senate side. So that one on education practices, House File 847, has a Division 1 of Education Information Programs, Program Standards and Funding, has a Division 2 on Education Tax Credits and Deductions, has Division 3 on Open Enrollment, Division 4 on school power, school board powers and duties, and Division 5 on shared operational functions. So again, House File 847 has passed out a full committee for House Education, then also has continued on the House side and passed out a House Full Committee on Ways and Means. Same language, still continuing, and that's House File 847. So another one that, another, as the House split these bills, so the House File 847 on education, education practices, then it also has House File 228 on diversity plans. That one has passed out of the House and also out of House Senate Education Full Committee. So that is alive with second file here coming up, and that's House File 228 Diversity Plans. And the third one that has kind of moved forward in the House side is House File 813 on charter, charter schools. That one, as mentioned earlier, had House floor activity last night until very late, or actually very early this morning. So that was House File 813 Charter Schools. So those are like the three, the three bills that the, the House has going forward right now in relation to the Governor's Education Bill.
Were the scholarships included?
Very good. Yes, thank you for bringing that up. With the exception, right, the Senate bill, Senate File 159, did contain the student for scholarships, as I mentioned. However, that has not moved. However, that has not moved forward on the House. Correct, that did not make first funnel. Yeah, thank you very much for bringing that up.
Session's not done yet, so.
I would say probably not, though. Representative Height, who is the Chair of House Education, has basically stated he does not have support from his caucus. So, I mean, possibly, but I would doubt it.
Senate File 467, is that online learning? Is that a?
What was the number?
467.
I would have to look that one up.
Okay.
Reported on that one last Friday. Okay. Senate File 467?
It's the crux of that. You know the, Renee, do you know the contents of that?
I would have to look that one up. Amy's looking it up over there.
467 is, yeah, it's online learning, continued remote learning, online coursework. Hang on just a second while I check what you're up to.
Seems to me that's a real relevant bill. Be interesting if you think that's going to pass.
Right, so this allows remote learning for implement weather for up to five school days?
Right.
It currently has, is passed the Senate. It's been referred over to House Education.
Okay.
Is where it's sitting at the moment.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Has it been scheduled for a sub?
It has not been scheduled for a sub yet.
And so we have, we have a funnel next Friday.
Yeah, we have second.
See what happens this week.
Yeah, right, right. It passed out of the Senate 47 to 0, and has just been referred to House Education, but no meeting yet scheduled for on House subs.
Just a comment on the, including whether are schools allowed to do that now?
Only because of the proclamation that gives them the authority to do that. So once that expires, this legislation would need to be in place.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And that's what's sort of tricky about this. There's a lot of things people can do just for this year. And so legislatively, they're looking at pieces of that, what parts do they want to continue to offer as an option?
About House Files 675 on substitute teachers, is there a?
BOE.
BOE?
That's, is that the, I'm assuming that's the one that will allow a substitute, a person to become a substitute teacher based on 60 credit hours? And that's a bill that was put in after a session delay. The BOE proposed a rule to do just that. The Rules Review Committee put on session delay, and now there's a bill to do that.
Such sort of the idea that a practicing teacher, well, let's say a, a teacher who was doing student teaching, for instance, would be able to sub then. I'm trying to figure, I'm trying to, yeah, I'm trying to think of the motivation for this. I suspect that that might be one.
What this does is make, it'll make it easier for us to have a whole lot more substitutes, because currently, the requirement is you have to have a bachelor's degree.
Right.
And so now you can have an associate's degree or the equivalent hours to an associate's degree. So.
So the pool would be, yeah, the pool would be.
Be larger.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
And that one, just for an update, it's passed the House, and then has come out of the Senate Full Committee.
Okay. Yeah.
So it is, is alive already for second funnel.
So there's been off and on discussion about a change in IFRS as far as letting recently retired educators return. Has there been any? Have you talked about that at all?
I have not heard anything about that.
Didn't they put a provision in place just for this year?
That's.
Yes. Which has allowed that, but you, but not going forward necessarily. Could be a thing that.
Renee, just one thought. If you see a bill that, that specifically names the board in some way, just give us a heads up.
Okay.
Charter schools. Yeah. If it mentions the board specifically in the legislation, I'd like to just a heads up on that. Can't, I don't get them all, but I try to look at those, so. Just a thought.
Yeah, good to know.
Thank you.
Renee, do you know a Senate File 248? That, did that make it through the funnel? That didn't make it, did it?
Senate File 248.
I don't think it made it through.
Didn't look like it.
Okay. And then what about 228? Is that now passed? I, I didn't, I didn't get that. Is it totally now passed? House Bill 228?
House 228?
Yes.
House File, yeah. It's passed the House, and then it's out of Senate Education Full Committee, so it has made second funnel.
Okay, thank you.
It's the diversity plans for House File 228, if we're, we're on the same bill. Okay. Okay. So that is the update, kind of what's happening there with those larger education bills. Also, kind of as we're talking here, there's still several bills in play on open enrollment. And as we also mentioned, second funnel is next Friday, April 2nd. So where a policy bill needs to be out of the First Chamber of Origin, and then out of the Second Chamber's Full Committee to stay alive for a policy bill. It doesn't apply to, like, appropriation bills, government oversight, ways and means, or leadership bills. So there's still a lot in play. We're watching everything, and.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So next week, you'll get, you'll get another really in-depth update from Renee.
Yes, yes, yes. So are there any other questions? On piece of legislation?
I think.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
All right. Consent agenda. I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
All right, so there's a second?
All second.
So moved in second, and all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the motion carries. All right, appeal decision.
All right. My name is Peter Anderson. I'm a train to the Department of Education, and I'm going to talk about appeal number 5135. This appeal ultimately arose out of the Gilbert Intermediate School September 2019 decision to allow the complainants to audio record and not video record at their son's IEP meeting. On November 27th, 2020, the complainants sent a letter to Gilbert's School Board President Andrew Rickles and Superintendent Lindsay Beecher, stating that the school district violated their constitutional rights under the First and Fourteenth Amendments in not allowing the video recording. On December 10th, 2020, the School Board President Andrew Rickles emailed complainants informing them that the school administration acted appropriately, and the school board would not take any action on their complaint. On December 11th, 2020, complainants filed this appeal seeking an order requiring the school district to allow complainants to take video recordings of meetings they have with school staff, including IEP meetings. On December 28th, 2020, Gilbert Community Schools District filed a motion to dismiss the appeal on the ground that the State Board of Education does not have jurisdiction to get the appeal, because there was no decision by the school board and the state board. Therefore, has nothing to review. Complainants filed a resistance to the motion to dismiss on December 31st, 2020, bringing out constitutional arguments. Constitutional questions are not to be addressed by agencies and are reserved for resolution by the courts. The parties were heard with a hearing and oral argument. On January 26th, 2021, Administrative Law Judge Rachel Morgan issued an order granting Gilbert's motion to dismiss. In Judge Morgan's order, she first noted that the purpose of the motion to dismiss here is to discuss whether there is even a legal argument upon which the school board is empowered to grant any relief, even if the facts are assumed to be the way that complainants state that they are. She points out, citing the Iowa Supreme Court, that an administrative agency only has the jurisdiction and authority as expressly conferred by statute or necessarily inferred from the power expressly granted. Those are her words. The section of the Iowa Code granting the state board its jurisdictional authority is Iowa Code Section 290.1, which reads as follows. An affected pupil or the parent or guardian of an affected pupil who is a minor, who is aggrieved by a decision or order of the Board of Directors of a school corporation in a matter of law or fact, or decision or order of a Board of Directors under Section 282.18, Subsection 5 May, within 30 days after the rendition of the decision or the making of the order, appeal the decision or order to the State Board of Education. The key part of the statute that we are concerned with is that the state board can only take the appeal here if we are reviewing a decision or order of the Board of Directors of a school corporation. Because complainants acknowledged, according to the ALJ, that the school board did not take an action in connection with their complaint, and there was no decision ever issued by the school board, there is no decision to review. The jurisdictional requirements of the statute are therefore not met. Judge Morgan also addressed complainant's argument that the school board had an obligation to act on their complaint, and that the board's failure to act is grounds for an appeal. She points out that the district has the discretion to make its own policies regarding the complaint process under Iowa Code Section 279.8. The district's policies in part state that it is within the discretion of the board to address complaints from the members of the school community, the school district community. The board is not obligated to address a complaint and may defer to the decision of the superintendent. School Board President Rickles decided not to put complainant's complaint on the school board agenda, and the school board never addressed or took action on the complainant's complaint. His actions, according to Judge Morgan, were compliant with the district's policies, and there was no obligation under Iowa law to address the complaint. Therefore, because there is no decision, the state board has no jurisdiction, and Judge Morgan granted the motion to dismiss the appeal. We should adopt the ALJ's ruling. Iowa Code Section 290.1 is clear that there needs to be a decision or order of the Board of Directors of School Corporation. The board simply did not issue a decision, and it's clear, based on longstanding state board president, precedent, sorry, Supreme Court precedent, an attorney general opinion, and the text of the statute that the school board president, or president, acting alone does not count as the school board itself. It is, as the ALJ said, there is no requirement under Iowa law or the district's policies that the school board address the complaint, and the board did not end up addressing the complaint. The state board has no jurisdiction, and the ALJ's order to grant the motion to dismiss should be adopted. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Just making an assumption that if the family chooses to, they could take this to court.
Yeah.
That's their, that's one question.
So the board has no obligation to put something on the agenda?
Yeah.
Another way, I came in to the superintendent with a complaint, and I said, I'd like for the board to deal with this. They have no obligation to put it on the agenda, and it can be ignored. It's interesting. Yeah. Yeah. We, we learn something every time we do one of these things, and, yeah, according to the law, Jen, and you wonder about the relief for the, for the parents. What is the relief? And it evidently is in district court. Is that where they go?
That is another. You know, bottom line is, you know, 290.1 requires a decision or order of the board sitting, you know, together and having something on their agenda, and that just didn't happen. So.
Any more questions? Can I get a motion?
I'll move that this, that we approve the proposed decision finding no jurisdiction to hear this appeal. Second.
All right, it's been moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, Peter.
Motion carries. Thank you for here. All right, now we move it.
Feels good to sit in this spot at this table again.
Long time.
Yeah.
No, January of last year. Because we didn't, yeah, March, we were online, right?
I think we were here, but.
Oh, you guys were here, and we were online, okay.
So four rules today.
Oh, yeah.
The first is Chapter 14, presenting with me also or answering questions that exceed my capacity will be Chad Hebling, Kathy Burch, and Barb Anderson. This is the rule that implements the bigger discussion this morning on therapeutic classrooms. The proposed amendment to Chapter 14 has two components. The first is the therapeutic classroom, classroom management supports for students' components. The second component implements Senate File 2261, and it addresses the issue of partnerships, which was mentioned during the work session this morning, having, allowing schools or authorizing schools to engage in partnerships with local mental health providers providing for health screening and mental health services in the school building during the school day. Kathy, Brad, and Barb did an excellent job of getting a lot of pre-notice comment, a lot of discussion with content area experts and interest groups that are listed in the preamble. And this proposed rulemaking, there's a, there's a really good job of addressing the concerns surfaced by the legislature. So. I think I'm going to recommend that it goes out for public comment, and that public comment would be in Don Robbins's words, molding the clay. Let's see what the public has to say about these, these proposed rules. So any questions for me, Brad or Kathy, about the amendment to Chapter 14?
This is very. So on page three, it is the, and it says, reform definitions and rules for public schools, accredited non-public schools, and area education agency. Can I assume that between pages four and 21, those apply only to public schools? Because on page 21, you have reference to accredited non, accredited non-public schools and other that. Am I just reading something into there?
So 20, 20, page 21 and forward is a new division. That's the division that would implement behavior health screenings and partnerships during the, with private providers during the school day or on the school grounds. Pages three through 21 implements the therapeutic classroom.
Public school.
For public schools and non-publics. But AEAs have a slice of that, because of the support that they provide to students with disabilities, professional development support that they might provide, the fact that an AEA might be part of a consortium. So the, the fact that there's an AEA reference, even though the primary drivers of this work will be schools and accredited non-public schools, the AEAs do have a, a pretty big chunk of this work. Even though they're not the direct provider, they will be the supporters of.
On page 10, it talks about, so we report any incident of assault or violence that results in injury or property damage, and the question would be, are you having an assault without injury and property damage?
Yes.
And that would not be required to be reported?
And probably it should, there's certain types of assaults that children get secluded for, like, you pushing. Is that, is that, is that just being a child, or is that having some need for therapeutic support? It's, you know, I hit and kicked all the time. After 50 years, I've sort of weed myself in that. This rule is designed to sort of, that distinction is designed to weed out, like, what is just being, what is just being a 10-year-old boy, a 10-year-old girl, versus what is needing sort of a more intense level of support? So what is H. Tipplepole versus what, what do you need support for?
Thanks.
I think you have another question, Mike.
I have all sorts of. I'm. I'm, a part of it has, and I'm sure this will be cleaned up as we go through, but, uh, there's reference to a school district and then they're not using the same terms throughout, I don't think.
That is something that the code editor is really good about correcting.
Okay.
Like, did you mean to draw this distinction? Did you really get work in supporting the board and the department in the process?
So I mean, in some places they don't say school district, they just say that school, the school district is defined, so I, okay.
In some places it could say school because it would be broadly inclusive of the non-pub or non-hubs or districts. So, the code editor will point all of those out and ask us what, what was the board's intent?
Thomas, I have a question and I think it's called out, but I just wanted to reiterate, when we partner with this, these local, um, health agencies, I was a little bit concerned that the families are not involved at the forefront. What I don't want to happen is these health agents coming to the public school and they start diagnosing without the parents' involvement. How do we make sure that they are right there alongside, because these are minors and such?
Well, the rule requires parent consent for the establishment of a parent, of a, of a treatment relationship. Uh, and, you know, there are touchpoints throughout the third division of the bill, or the third division of the rulemaking that would add in parent involvement. So, you know, I believe that the rule as drafted addresses those concerns, but I think I'd be interested in how the public comment, how the public responds to them. But there are touchpoints throughout, uh, the third division of the rulemaking that addresses parent involvement, uh, specifically including consent to establishing the, the treatment relationship.
So, these parental consents do not violate confidentiality of the student? And I guess I'm, I'm thinking of particularly when we talk about gun violence. One of the big issues is that mental, uh, mental health professionals cannot report that information as confidential. So is that any different here? I know we're not talking about gun violence, but, does that violate any rules of confidentiality requiring parents to, give this consent before treatment can occur?
No, because it would ordinarily happen already in sort of like the private provider relationship. So these are private, private providers providing services on school campuses. If a student reported to a guidance counselor, a school employee, that, you know, I have a hit list or I've got a, I've got a, a conceivable plan to do mass harm. The guidance counselor would be allowed under, uh, perp, to make that report, uh, to involve public health, to involve public safety because of perp exceptions to confidentiality. These private providers are, would be governed by HIPAA consents, uh, because they're, they're not school employees. They're, they're just renting, in effect, renting space from the schools to provide these services. Uh, that would be, they'd have their own set of rules. This is consistent with those.
So private providers would come to the school. There are no circumstances under which the student would be taken to the provider. Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
That could be a possibility.
It could be a possibility, but that, that's a possibility already. But this would just allow,
Allow those private.
A lot of those private providers to be in the building, either in person or through telehealth.
Some of the issues with providing student services is to get the student to the service.
Sure, sure. However.
I mean, it's a loss of time if I'm transporting students from.
Sure.
The families don't have the means to.
Right. Yeah.
Any other questions? I'm, I'm looking forward to the public comment on this. I think it's going to be a robust public discussion.
I would move that we give notice, um, rules changes in chapter fourteen, school health services.
Second.
Second, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? All right, the motion carries.
Next rule in your agenda, item seven, tab F, chapter fifteen. This is a complete repeal and replace of the current rules on telecommunications and virtual learning in light of, uh, Senate file twenty-three ten last year, which repealed Iowa learning online. Iowa learning online was like glitter. It got into everything. So there are references to ILO throughout. And it was easier just to kick, you know, Ctrl Z, do a complete rebuild of the chapter. So that's what is before you rather than attempting to, interline and strike and replace. The bill does, this rulemaking does a couple of things. It streamlines the approval process to be, an online provider, either as an online provider for school dis, as a school district or an online provider as a private provider. The, the first iteration of this chapter, was when folks didn't have a lot of experience doing online instruction, what works, what didn't. Now we've got all sorts of experience. And the thing that is most important, the thing that is at the core of this is the licensed teacher aligned to course, aligned to core content standards. So less of a footprint about like, what is your lesson plan look like? What is, you know, how interactive are you? And, you know, is it a quiz versus an assessment? What do you call it? Less fine-tuned comment and more looking on the things that matter most, which is the licensed teacher and alignment to core content standards. Uh, the second thing that this rulemaking does is kind of address things moving forward. There are placeholders in case. There's a placeholder in case, uh, the bill allowing virtual snow days passes. Uh, so we don't have to come back and rulemake again if that bill is, if that bill passes. Amy Williamson and Janelle are able to answer any questions. But this is, uh, designed to focus on what matter more, what matters most in a more streamlined.
So I know that Des Moines Public is going to be, are they operational with their online programs now as far as for the future?
They already were.
They were. I heard what Sioux City is going to do the same and maybe Iowa City. Are we anticipating that a lot of school districts are going to start doing this now?
Yeah.
We, go ahead, go.
We actually have many, um, school districts who have applied to have a, um, fully online program. And I think that part of that is a misunderstanding of what's, of when you need that application. Um, and so I think these rules are actually going to help clear some of that up along with the guidance companies, the rules. So, did put out some guidance to try to clarify when you do and don't need to have that application. But I think that, um, before the rules are out, it's actually kind of falling on duff ears, especially in the middle of pandemics. So, we have a list of all of the districts who have applied and been approved. But you really only need to have that when you are applying for the specific reason of accepting open enrollment from other districts. So Des Moines, yes, um, you know, the originals, Cam and Clayton Ridge, yes, they have to have that approval. Sioux City, I don't know that their intent is really that they want to be able to have open enrollment from other districts for their online school. Because what you're doing then is really a school. You get a building number and everything and it's a building that exists in the ether really. So Council Bluffs, for instance, does have that. If you'll see in the rules, if you're just serving your, your kids that attend your school, if they happen to be open enrolled there, fine, you can go ahead and, and provide them with online instruction. If your intent is not to attract, like you're advertising to attract, uh, open enrollment, that application's not really necessary. So I think we have a lot of schools, I can drop the link into the chat where you can see who all's applied and been approved. They're not all really doing that. I think that they felt like they really wanted to have that application, in, so that they didn't have the ability to do it taken away from them.
A lot of these applications have a CYA function.
Yes, they do.
Another thing in this, another thing in this rulemaking is a clarification that, a lot of districts have maintained a program of online instruction this year that is just for this year. They don't feel it was sustainable. So nothing in this rule will require a district to provide a program of online instruction unless it's necessary for a child with disability or something. If I'm a small district, I'm not intending to, or I'm a large district and I just don't feel it's the right work for my community. I'm not required, to continue the things that I was required to do because of the pandemic. And that, I would not be required to continue those moving forward. We're not, the intent of this is to enable choice not to require folks to continue this task.
Does have some implications down the road as far as offer and teach requirements?
There's some specific language in here about offer and teach that codifies some changes in Senate file number three ten. There are certain, courses that you get no questions asked. The financial literacy, foreign language, computer science. There, and then there's sort of a skip pattern of if then, what, uh, what online courses can you use for offer and teach?
So we might think twice about chemistry or physics is because of labs? I'm just wondering how, how we handle that or, or don't we? Maybe, maybe we don't allow that.
You know, there, there are online options for chemistry and physics that have, uh, laboratory content without the lab. Um, and so that's just a, a different way of doing chemistry, but it, it fulfills the requirements of the laboratory experience, just not in, the room with the black fireproof table instead of bunsen burners. It's, it's, it's just a different way of having the laboratory experience. That physics course or that chemistry course would still be approved.
And we're okay with that.
We're, we're okay with it because it's aligned to standards and taught by a licensed chemistry.
We've actually been okay with it for some time when we had Iowa learning online.
Sure.
And, you know, uh, ILO's gone now and we've diversified quite a bit. And so there's a lot of options for getting those courses. But when we did have ILO, one of the most popular classes was always chemistry because, um, it was one of the hardest to find.
On page eight, where it talks about student participation, is the phrase receiving private instruction, is that an euphemism for, uh, homeschooling?
Yes. And one of the bills that's moving might require either some correction or an amendment to this rule. There is, uh, a bill moving that would remove students in independent private instruction from the ability to participate in district-sponsored, virtual instruction or to participate in the department, the developed course exchange. That bill itself came from the homeschooling community just because of the inconsistency with independent private instruction and participating in, uh, public school sponsored services. But private instruction, that's the, that's the Iowa nice way of saying homeschool.
So if I understand homeschooling law correctly, if I'm a parent and I have a child, all I have to do is say I'm homeschooling and then there's virtually no interaction of that student with public education in Iowa. Is that, I mean, that's one option, right?
One of, one of the three options.
I don't think you have to notify the school. I don't think so. Okay.
They do, they do as a matter of, they're advised to by their interest groups just so that, that just sort of like preempt the current officer discussion, but.
So is, what if I'm that student? And my parents have chosen basically not to do any instruction, which it permits, as I understand it. Can that student, take an online, um, course offered by an AEA on his or her own?
That would be difficult if the student was not eighteen. We could talk more about homeschooling at a later date. That might be a, a really valuable work session. But back to the notion of parent choice. If a parent for minor child says this is, this is how you're getting your schooling, that's how you're getting your schooling. I don't know if a, I just don't know how that would work and I would welcome, welcome a broader discussion about homeschooling, but the, that would need to be addressed outside of this rulemaking.
I am fairly certain, and I know we have to follow up on this, but I'm fairly certain that there's a provision from Senate file twenty-three ten, that requires, um, a student who is homeschooled to register with a district in order to take advantage of an online course. Now, if it's an AEA, I don't know how it would work, but.
But you'd have to register and can I register myself without my parents?
Exactly.
So that's a, it's more of a home instruction question than these rules, but I think it is, it, it's, it's been a while since this board said, uh, finger quotes, what, what's the, what's Dave Tilly's word, deep dive?
Yeah.
We haven't done a deep dive into home instruction for a while and I think that that might be something for, or a work session on your agenda at a later time.
And you're correct. On page fourteen, it says, provided such student, judged to read this school's good, relevant and the coursework offered on the other.
Any other questions about chapter fifteen?
No. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion that the state board give notice of intended action to amend chapter.
There's a second. Moved in second. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Next rule, agenda item eight, tab B, after twenty-one. And this goes in the category of the new normal becoming the old, just not new anymore. During the pandemic, the requirement that the OWI coursework offered by community colleges be offered in person. Uh, Governor Reynolds has suspended that through disaster proclamation. This rulemaking would make that permanent. It would eliminate the requirement that OWI coursework be, provided in person. Even prior to the pandemic, it was provided online if there was a medical condition or, you know, I can't leave my house or there's, there's some reason I can't get to, the in-person coursework. But this has worked well since I believe May, when this requirement was first waived in proclamation. The recommendation from the community colleges division is that be made permanent. Amy Iskey and Eric Sinclair are, are available. They're able to answer any questions that I did not completely screw up.
They're all.
So any questions or any additions or corrections to what I had to say? And apologies if I butchered your last name, Amy, if you're still getting it.
Oh, you did great. You know, and I think you covered it well. Many of the providers would like to return to face-to-face instruction and that's kind of the intent, but this rule cha, change would allow us a little flexibility. Just knowing that multiple modalities could be important in the coming years, you know, for some, fully online blended perhaps to meet needs of certain audiences. So this would just give us that flexibility that's not currently in the rule.
Are there other avenues for folks who are compelled to do this?
This is the only game in town.
It's the only one.
This is what they have to do to get square with Department of Transportation. If, if that is a, if that is an order from, if, if that's part of their sentence, this is their only game in town.
Yesterday, the community college council recommended approval of this, so I would make a motion, that the state board give notice of intended action to amend chapter twenty-one.
Second that.
All right. It's been moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, the motion carries.
And the next rule is chapter seventy-nine. And the next rule is chapter seventy-nine. Item nine, page, tab eight, under binder. And task manage this rulemaking going forward. So Peter is joining us and also presenting is Dr. Larry.
Yeah, just a few minor items on this one. We are proposing to amend chapter seventy-nine, which outlines the standards and criteria requirements that all traditional educator preparation programs must meet to be approved to prepare educators in Iowa. So there are three changes that we're proposing. First item would strike the definition of regional accreditation under rule seventy-nine point two. Insert the definition for institutional accreditation in its place. Second item is that on seventy-nine point four, the rule will be changed to say that institutions seeking approval for their accreditation and preparation programs must be presented by an institutional accrediting agency recognized by the U.S. Department of Education rather than just be regionally accredited. So that kind of goes along with the first item. The third item is that in rule seventy-nine point nine, the sentence would be added to the rule to specify that the approval of any institutional application for adding the dyslexia specialist endorsement must approve and include approval by the Iowa Reading Research Center. Now, I'd like to pass the board away by any additional comments and for any questions you might have.
Sure. The, the first one is the, the United States Department of Education used to have two levels. They, they have multiple levels of accreditation. They used to have two at the top. One was regional accreditation and then national accreditation. All they've done is collapsed those. And so we just, we just need to align with that language. But we also, the, the Board of Educational Examiners has the same language and so have their rules. So we worked with them so that we're using the exact same language that the BOE is using. So there's no confusion for anybody. And it's, that's pretty straightforward. And the other one, the dyslexia specialist, that's the, the last of our rules changes that will come out of Senate File twenty-three fifty-six from twenty-twenty. That was the dyslexia, a lot, a large dyslexia bill. And what it stated was that the University of Iowa with the Reading Research Center, where the Reading Research Center is contained, they will initiate the first dyslexia specialist programming. The, they've gotten that approval and they're ready to start that. And then once they've done a cohort, then other colleges and universities can also offer that endorsement. But the Reading Research Center was always going to be a part of that approval of any of those other programs. They'll look at the curriculum and the faculty with us and that kind of thing. So again, it's, it's straight out of Senate File twenty-three fifty-six.
I thought we dealt with the issue of dyslexia in some other manner, Larry. It doesn't, I'm not.
We've, now there's, there's a couple of things. We've, we've dealt with dyslexia in a number of ways for a number of reasons. Primarily legislative and some best practices. Several years ago, we changed our curricular requirements to more strongly specify dyslexia preparation for students with dyslexia. And that was done. But this is, the Senate File twenty-five, twenty-three fifty-six added a separate endorsement. We have a reading specialist endorsement, which is just that specialist.
Which includes some dyslexia.
Which will, absolutely. Everybody that does reading includes some dyslexia. But what this does is allows us, provides us for a dyslexia specialist. And so, and it's just that specialist and dyslexia. And there's provisions in there that the AEA's will have a dyslexia specialist and schools can have them. University of Iowa has probably thirty people that are lined up to take it. So it's, it's a good endorsement.
Sure.
But what the legislature did in that twenty-three fifty-six was added a component. Anytime a program, a college university wants to add an endorsement or add a separate program, they do an approval process with the department. If it's a large change of scope, we'll bring it in front of the board. And what this says is that if anybody's going to add dyslexia specialist as a component of that department approval, we will include the Reading Research Center. And of course, we worked with the Reading Research Center on this language and the process of doing all of that.
Thank you.
The dyslexia bill is a big bill. And there are lots of, it touched in lots of our chapters. So that's why it's a, we've got one coming up and we've got a rule coming up in May that comes out of that bill, so.
This will be the first one, specialist will be the first one offered in Iowa, University of Iowa.
That's correct.
First one to offer that specialist degree.
That's correct. Yeah. And a lot of these changes from this bill affected the Board of Educational Examiners. Again, they developed the dyslexia specialist endorsement. And again, we worked with them. We've been working together on all of these things.
I would move that we give notice of our intent, intent to modify or amend chapter seventy-nine.
Is there a second? It's been moved in second. All those in favor say aye. Sorry, opposed? All right, the motion carries.
So that concludes our rules for the day. I want to just storyboard out where they go next. They are out for public comment. The earliest that this body can adopt them is at, it's June meeting. And at the May meeting, right now, there are three technical corrections makings that I will, we will be bringing to you to notice. And then the seven rules that you noticed in the January meeting will be presented to you for adoption. No comments, but one on all of the seven rules anticipates seeing them under consent agenda. So at the end of each rulemaking presentation going forward, I think, I thought it would be useful to storyboard out when you'll see them next.
Thanks, Thomas. All right. Northwest Iowa Community College interim accreditation report.
Good morning. I'm Chris Russell. I'm a education program consultant in the Division of Community Colleges and Workforce Preparation. And I'm here to present the Northwest Iowa Community College Accreditation Interim Accreditation Report. Every five years, the community colleges have a accreditation visit and they alternate between a comprehensive visit and an interim visit. And this is the interim visit for Northwest Iowa. Today, we have two guests, President Alitha Stube and Vice President John Hartog. I'll make a few comments on the report. And then I know that they have a, a presentation to make as well. We visited virtually the college in November, November nineteenth and twentieth via teleconference due to COVID because we can't visit ver, we can't visit in presence for the past year or so. We had several colleagues from our department's visits. Jane Bradley, Eric St. Clair and Kelly Friesleben joined with me. Because it was an interim visit, we did not have the external reviewers go with us, but they did participate in the desk review. We had faculty member from Iowa Central help us review the materials as well as Marge Welch, Vice President from Iowa Western, help us look at the materials. And we looked in depth at all of their accreditation materials from the Higher Learning Commission as well as eight components. You'll notice in kind of the overview of the college that they have fifty-two awards that they offer at Northwest Iowa. They are the fourteenth out of fifteenth in size in the state of Iowa with just over twenty-eight hundred students in the state of Iowa. However, they are tenth in joint enrollment in the state of Iowa and second in the percent of students who are involved in distance learning. They also have the highest percentage of students graduating in their members and students in Iowa, which is pretty impressive. You'll also see on page six that they have a number of high number of programs, first in the state and college rankings, which I believe that both President Stube and Vice President Hartog will mention in their presentation. We looked at Higher Learning Commission compliance and they had a very clean evaluation in their past accreditation visit from the HLC. They regularly go beyond the minimum requirements according to HLC and have been building assessment strategies over the years and attending assessment academies and have a great number, as we mentioned, of high program assessment rankings. One of the eight components that we look at is faculty qualifications and load. And they have a strong qualifications faculty process and documentation that we've worked through with all of the community colleges in the state. Their faculty are well qualified in many areas and strong program rankings again. And any recommendations that we made throughout the documents, they, they took care of very quickly as, as you will see in their presentation as well. This was also an equity visit. We don't bring that to you. We take that to the Office of Civil Rights, but kind of where that overlaps with the accreditation is the special needs component. And, and we looked for several examples of student services that they meet for their students. They have hired a bilingual careers pathway navigator in the last few years and an academic specialist. And they also have a strong trio program. They hired a student support services multicultural leader. All of these were part of their strategic plan that they've really put into place over the last few years. They have a growing Latino population in their region and also a growing East African population in their region. And they've made efforts to reach out to those populations. We look at program review and how they build their programs, CTE programs in their region and look at samples of those programs and their process for continuous improvement. Their documentation and their use of data is clear, comprehensive. They use their data and metrics and they follow up on the recommendations that their faculty make and put money towards making improvements in those, in those programs. Their advisory boards are strong and engaged. And we have a database of all the programs at the state level and make sure that it is matching their catalogs and their websites. And it matched up very well. Strategic planning, as we mentioned, they put quite a, a few efforts into some positions. But also they had utilized a vendor, Noah Levitz, to develop college student retention strategies, which is important in their rural region. They had increased their scholarship budget and reduced student costs in programs of study, which I think has put their college in a better position to go after grants as well. They'll talk maybe a little bit about some of their leadership changes that are coming within their, their college as well. Five years ago, we had requested that they kind of put a new facilities plan into place and they have done that. In fact, in two thousand and eighteen, they had a bond issue that passed with over seventy-four percent approval from the public. So strong regional approval as well. And their students and staff, we do interviews with them as part of our visit. And they appreciated the accessibility of the campus and the safety measures that the college has put into place. The last two components that we look at during the visit are their quality faculty plan that is a state requirement. They have faculty professional development resources in place for their faculty and opportunities to engage their faculty and their board in an active committee. And as we mentioned, joint enrollment, their senior year plus plan is called College For You. They go through a NASEP accreditation process, which is re-accredited through twenty-two-five, twenty-six and have about nine hundred students involved each year in joint enrollments with solid accountability procedures. Many colleges in the state are trying to reduce textbook costs through something called open educational resources. And they are expanding that initiative as well. So I guess at this point, I'm going to share a PowerPoint and let them do a presentation and then we can open up for some questions. So Dr. Stube, I, I don't know if you or Dr. Hartog would like to present first, but we'll open it up for you to share. Hopefully you're seeing the screen here. Are you able to see that?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Chris. MCC to this day is deeply and proudly rooted in career and technical instr- instruction and was actually the pilot program for the state sponsored by the Iowa Department of Public Instruction and conducted by Sheldon Community Schools back when we were Northwest Iowa Vocational School. During nineteen sixty-four to sixty-six, three vocational programs were offered to students representing nineteen high schools in Lyon, O'Brien, Osceola and Sioux counties. Part of Cherokee County joined merged area four later. So to this day, we serve four and a half counties with a population of sixty-nine thousand. The first day of class here was January twenty-seven, nineteen sixty-four, when forty-nine students met in rented facilities downtown Sheldon for auto mechanics, auto body and vendor repair and welding. And that was our beginning. But in nineteen sixty-five, in July, Senate File five-fifty authorized the formation of merged area schools. And your state board approved our application for merged area four. A board of seven directors was established for NCC on April twenty-seven, nineteen sixty-six. And NIVS was officially organized, as it says there on the slide. By the early seventies, there were thirty-eight programs with five hundred students annually. We were approved for associative arts in nineteen seventy-five, accredited by what is now HLC to offer diplomas and degrees and change to Northwest Iowa Technical College. On July one, nineteen ninety-three, our name changed to Northwest Iowa Community College to reflect our status as a comprehensive community college. Our board of directors had the foresight to purchase a hundred and forty-six acres located one mile west of Sheldon in October nineteen sixty-six. From the first mechanical technical building built in sixty-eight, which we call Building D now, and you'll see on the map there, our campus has continued to grow and serve our area well. The aerial photo you see shows our campus today, complete with four residence halls. Cherokee was our first, O'Brien, Lyon, Osceola. And of course, Sioux isn't there, but it will be coming. Buildings D, A, B and H, you see on the map, they're all connected. Building C is across the parking lot. The power line field is behind it, named for its first instructor, which is one of our signature programs. The applied technology building, you see ATB completed in two thousand and sixteen. And the lifelong learning center, which opened in two thousand and eleven, is depicted there as LLRC. And that expanded student activities greatly as well as community memberships and events. The stars on this picture indicate major projects that have occurred in the last thirteen years. So I would love to invite each of you, if you haven't been to our campus lately, take another look. Next, meet David, one of our many future-ready Iowa Last Dollar Scholar success stories. David lives in Hayward with his mom and siblings, including his sister, who he's holding in that picture. His mom isn't working right now, so money is tight. David worked all summer but didn't have enough money for college before he came here. He had seen his cousin graduate from NCC's Heavy Equipment Program, another one of our signature programs, and made really good money, starting at thirty dollars an hour. And without this Last Dollar Scholarship, David could not have followed in his cousin's footsteps. David graduated in March twenty-twenty-one. His goal is to stay in Iowa, work for a company and to center and travel the United States for them. Chris talked a little bit about our profile from the Department of Education on the next slide. And as you can see, we served twenty-eight thirty-one credit students and seven thousand two hundred forty-four non-credit students in two thousand and nineteen. That's over ten thousand individuals that we helped get to the next level. And I was glad he pointed out, we're number fourteen, not number fifteen in size. We are small and mighty. And because of our quality faculty and staff that we have here, we're number one in the state for graduation and success rates, as you mentioned. And I'll show you on the next slide. But on this slide, you can see we're one of only two colleges in the state that has increased over the last five-year period by two point two percent. We're slightly more female than the state average of fifty-five percent. We're at sixty-one and a half percent. That's probably due to our health programs. Nursing really is our largest career technical program. Our minority increase numbers are increasing, like Chris said. Seventeen percent versus the state average of twenty-three point one percent. We jumped early into concurrent enrollment and note that we're ten of the fifteen colleges in Iowa for that. And Chris already talked about distance learning. We're part of the Iowa Community College Online Consortium. We're a leading member and seventy-seven point four percent of our students are enrolled in at least one online course. And so the next slide does show our number one rankings in graduation and success rates. Now, you might think that number fifteen is a bad thing, but when it comes to federal loan default rates, it's a good thing to be the lowest in the state. So we're happy about that as well. On the next slide, I mentioned power line as a signature program. And six nineteen, since nineteen sixty-seven, we have educated over two thousand. And since 1967, we have educated over 2,000 Power Line alumni. But besides their skills and their well-recognized across the state and the nation, we're proud to also instill an attitude of service and giving back during the program. Many have been involved in service projects in the U.S., but three NCC alumni had the opportunity of a lifetime to extend electrical service for the first time to a small village in north central Guatemala. When the Iowa Association of Electric Cooperatives reached out to all 11 of the state's electric cooperatives for volunteers, guess who volunteered? Three NCC grads quickly agreed to be involved in the project, and with a group of 12 linemen from Iowa, Illinois, and Wisconsin, all went on this global service project. 25% from NCC went to Guatemala up there. NCC Power Linemen do light the way all across the state, the U.S., and globally. And next, I want to show you a few of the building projects. Chris mentioned our high approval rating on our general obligation bond, which was passed April 3, 2018. And so to attract and train skilled individuals, we actually expanded our first project, the Building D. Again, that first building on campus, it was called Mechanical Technical back in 68 when it was built. But here, in 2019, is the front of this. You see it from Highway 18. It's even better looking at night when those lines are lit up. But this general obligation bond, which was for $14,185,000 plus our state ace dollars and our physical plant dollars, allowed us to expand graduates, programming, and student resources. We also now have our diesel technology program as a standalone two-year program. Our automotive includes light-duty diesel. We have a great partnership with Snap-on, and we also have the High School Academy Automotive Class. The second project from our bond proceeds would be the next slide, Building H remodel and addition. And it will be a two-story addition beginning this spring. We're really excited for the ground to thaw and for the construction to begin because it will increase the space from about 18,000 square feet to about 48,000 square feet. We'll have four simulation labs. We have one now, so we'll add four. That'll be five. And we'll be able to integrate EMS, our radiologic technology program, nursing, CNA, and other health programs. Medical Lab Technician will be our newest program, and I'll let John tell you about that in a few minutes. The virtual hospital field will allow us to expand numbers of students even more. Northwest Iowa Hospitals and long-term care are great partners of ours, and we have a sector board in health that just met last week and gave us great feedback on how successful our graduates are. We also have, on the next slide, a sector board in manufacturing. Before we completed Building D in 2019, we had to move our welding lab over to Building C, and we created a manufacturing center with our engineering design and design technology programs and ideal lab. I'll show you right away. You can see the new state-of-the-art lab here, completed in 2019. We tripled the space, better ventilation, 30 booths versus 20, and are in the process of becoming an AWS certified testing center. We already do the certifications. Our instructor has been certified for some time, but now we have the facility to go with it. And again, imagine the business and industry training and everything else we can do in there as well. Next slide shows you the ideal lab also in the manufacturing center, and it contains all sorts of equipment, 3D printers, a wind turbine, robotics. A cobot is being donated soon that can be used from concept design to production. This allows our instructors all across campus to use this shared space. Business and industry training again, summer camps, like the summer coding camp we had with 100 second through fifth graders. They love the space. The opportunities are endless with this great space. We are always strategically thinking. Next slide.
Thank you, Dr. Stube, and my name is John, John Hartog, one of the vice presidents here at NCC. And it was great to hear all of the good things that are happening here at NCC, and we wanted you to know that they are happening according to plan. So as we finish out our current strategic plan, we are also looking ahead to build out our future strategic plan, the next one. And it is a five-phase process for the building of our future strategic plan. I'm happy to report that the first phase, which was due to be completed by this coming June, is already done. And so we're on schedule and ahead a little bit as we embark on the second phase. That first phase, of course, like most other strategic planning, involved the environmental scan. And so we took a look at the trends that are impacting community colleges and industry needs and so forth, both in our part of the state, statewide and nationally. Together with a twofold SWOT analysis, we have hired an institutional and instructional effectiveness coordinator. And Dr. Bird will be functioning as our project manager for the planning process. We've selected the members of the advisory committee, and so as you can see, we're done with phase one, and we're already into phase two. What I want to show you with this slide is that with phase two, we're able to fold in the work of our accrediting bodies project that it requires of colleges like NCC. And we had chosen as our project, our quality initiative project, that we would do work in the area of non-academic assessment. So the co-curricular assessment of activities and learning opportunities here at NCC. So we're able to take the information and the data and the analysis from our HLC quality initiative, fold that into phase two of our strategic planning. And then I also wanted to note, for Dr. Russell's benefit, three stars, and this other arrow on the right of the screen where it says three Iowa Department of Education recommendations. And just one thing as an aside here, I have to say that Dr. Russell and I are wearing really nice ties today, so we're wearing the same tie. The Iowa Department of Education's interim visit back in November walked away after its virtual visit and its desk audit with no formal findings, which is good news, but they did, and we appreciate this, they did leave us with 11 recommendations, all right? So what we're doing is actually taking three of those 11 recommendations, and we're, we're working on those recommendations, and they dovetail nicely into phase two of our building of our future strategic plan. I'll show you in just a second what I mean by these three, but I wanted you to see how that the strategic planning process here at NCC, it's a plan that we live, breathe, and operate. It's a plan that provides direction that is well-based, and then there are many inputs that we bring into the plan. So if we could have the next slide, please. On the left, you see mention made of the 11 recommendations. Soon after we received these 11 recommendations, the presidents, the executive council met, and Dr. Stube led us through a review of these 11 recommendations, and we assigned leaders or groups of leaders for each of these 11 recommendations and deadlines for each of them. Then soon after that, we pushed this information out to the entire college employee community with our Spring All College Meeting. This is good for accountability. Now everybody knows what these 11 recommendations are. People know who's accountable and how we hope to achieve all 11 of these. I'm telling you this because I want you to know that we are preemptive here at NCC and that words of advice from the IADOE we take as words for advancement. And we are already completing some of these 11 and looking forward to completing the rest of them within the next few months. Three examples from the prior slide, but we'll stay on this slide, have to do with data. The Department of Education reminded us that big data gives a voice to all. That's a great reminder. And that more employees, not just the heavy-duty decision-makers in Suite A, but all employees, more and more, should be data conversant, and we are pushing data out now to more employees. And all employees should see how their work aligns with the strategic plan's provisions. So as we build the future plan, it's a great opportunity to bring more and more employees into play. On the right side of the screen, just one example of a new partnership that we are embarking on here at NCC. This has to do with the Medical Laboratory Technician Program. I want you to please consider with us how that these kinds of partnerships show fiduciary faithfulness and responsibility both to the citizens of Iowa who pay their taxes and who employ taxpaying citizens, and also it shows fiduciary responsibility to our students and even more specifically to the workforce needs here in our region of the state. We had been listening through our sector board and through meetings with the CEOs of healthcare facilities that there was this pressing need for med lab techs. We took a look at the program. It would be a very expensive program to add. Ideally, we would like to host this program as an NCC program, but it would cost quite a bit when it comes to equipment and to the properly qualified instructors in order to have the fully accredited program. So what we did instead is we reached out to Kirkwood Community College across the state, and they were happy to partner with us. And so we're able to offer to students in our area of the state an opportunity to go through this MLT program, to graduate from an accredited program, to sit the certification exam and to go out into the workforce. And it's a win-win for everybody. We also will be utilizing the lab space of one of our area's hospitals' laboratory facilities, and that also saves the taxpayers of Iowa money. And you can see then this fiduciary responsibility that we champion here at NCC. We'll go on to the next slide, and just so you know, on the next slide and then the slide after the next slide, it's just showcasing a few of the awards that NCC has won on the previous one. It mentions, for example, that we are number one in the nation according to the Brookings Institute for Middle Class Mobility in Higher Education, which means that students who come into our college, and we are an open-access college for everybody, if they're willing to work hard, we're going to work hard with them, and they're going to have a success story, and they're going to move up, and they will evidence a lifetime of middle-class mobility. You'll see, there's just a whole lot of awards here. I will not go through all of them. Number one in the nation when it comes to online learning. We are, we are always to date, all previous six times, mentioned in the top 150 when it comes to the Aston Institute's Award for Community College Excellence, which places us in the top 4% nationwide of community colleges based upon performance metrics that align with student success. So you can see that the service and success at NCC really are more than just words. They are truly mottos that we live by. And then most recently, on the bottom right, number one in the nation graduation rates according to intelligent.com. Again, just a very recent award. We wanted to share that with you so that you might be happy with us here in our corner of the state. And that concludes my portion of this presentation, and we thank you for, for hearing us out today.
Thank you, John. And we want to recognize that Dr. Stube, President, is retiring, and Dr. John Hartog is going to be the next president of Northwest Community Colleges, Iowa Community College. So want to reference that as well for people's information. So questions for Northwest Iowa Community College or on the accreditation report?
This, this is Betty, and I don't have a question at this point. I want to congratulate you on your equity visit. I'm from Marshalltown, and so I kind of understand the demographics of your community, and it looks to me like you are really addressing the needs in your community very well, and I just compliment on that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
We presented to the Community College Council yesterday, and we were all very impressed with this report. It was an excellent report, and therefore I would move that we continue to accredit Northwest Iowa Community College.
And I second.
All right, it's been moved in second. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? All right, the motion carries. Congratulations. Thank you.
Yes, congratulations. This is Mike May from Spirit Lake. I drive by you occasionally. You do a marvelous job.
Have you been up the polls?
No, I didn't. I had that opportunity, fortunately. I probably would have. Thank you again for serving that community. I don't know that I've ever heard anything negative said about your programs, and that's, that's a real credit to you guys. You do a wonderful job, and, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, so now let me adjourn for maybe 10 minutes. We can get food, come back. And I think we have lunch and board reports, so let me adjourn until... We'll shoot just, we'll just do 10 minutes, like five till, or do we need to continue until noon? You just want to go until noon? The next one's supposed to be noon, so what should we do? So we just come back and then do? We could do like last time and do board reports at the end, if we don't mind meeting lunch in front of doing Iowa community colleges.
Okay. So just come back at noon and then just do board reports at the end? To you guys. You guys okay?
Yep, sure, whatever.
Betty and Kim, can you hear that? Come back at noon.
Sounds good.
Okay, okay, all right.